Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners, citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Donahue?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Prohaska?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Sancy?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And tonight we have our district strategic plan review and Mr. Ryan Gans will go through a whole bunch of stuff for us.
All right.
Hopefully it's not going to jinx it like it did last year, right?
Yeah.
Remember this was our last meeting.
It was the last meeting we had until the world changed. So maybe tonight is the portal opening back up. We're going to go back to some normalcy. Well, just for those of you who might be watching this now or in later repeat broadcasts, this is what we do with our strategic plan. We have a five-year goal-setting strategic plan, but then we also set priority initiatives every year, and then I report out to the board three times a year in October, February, and then in May. And May is when we'll choose or talk about what the goals are for the following year. So this one's always just a little bit shorter. It's kind of that bridge between the beginning of the year and the end of the year. Certainly, if you have questions, as board members let me know, the folks on the exec staff are watching in this building in their office. And so if there would be a specific question, I'm going to ask them not to zoom in. That gets a little clunky, especially for others on Zoom. So we'll just give them a second or two and they'll come down and give you whatever information you might need here from in the board. So as we talk about our priority initiatives, you know, they're broken into four different areas, the first of which is the student achievement and development. So I'll read the, and Mike will put the, up on the board there or on the screen. So you can see that things are ranked either as completed, operational. Obviously, the difference between a completed and operational, completed is sort of a one and done type of a thing. And so we do it, and it's a checkmark. Our operational means it's something that we've sort of internalized or systematized or will continue to do on whatever that rotation or repetitive basis would be. Then we're making progress, significant progress, steady progress, some progress, or have we chosen to cancel that priority initiative for the year? And that one really kind of sprang up after our first go around of this. It's been almost a decade now that we've been doing this. And the canceled was important because quite honestly, I think the board at that time saw lots of operational and completed. They thought, well, if everything gets done too quickly, maybe we aren't stretching far enough. And so we thought we ought to have a way to say, and we tried something that was kind of a stretch for us and we were going to go a different direction. This year is unique, obviously. These goals, these priority initiatives were set by the board and the administrative team in the context of a pandemic. And so you'll see a lot of pieces of pandemic planning here, and much of that will be completed and is a checkmark, and we're moving well past that. And that kind of brings us to the first one. Create virtual learning plans through district, school, and family collaboration for all learners, including those with disabilities, those eligible for English language learner services, those at risk, and those gifted and talented programming. So that was a heavy lift last year. I spent most of the summer and fall planning on how do we deliver a remote education for all students? Should we need to go fully online? Or should we have families who choose the online component during the current time? We're still running that today. But we need, as a public school district, to not just, you know, just say, here's the plan, but we need to have a lot of nuances to that plan so that all students who might want to make that choice have that ability. So that is a checkmark. We have come out of our hybrid scenario, as you all well know. We're into week two of our fully return. We do have about 16% of our students still participating online, though that number continues to change. We do have pretty regular requests for students to come back. I think families, kids, see neighbors, or people they know coming back to school and say, hey, we'd like to do that, too. So we do see, and we'll keep you updated, but we do have a few students, seems like almost every day, making the decision to transition back to in-person. Primarily at the elementary school, it's harder at the secondary because of the way those classes are organized, though we do have some that will come back at trimester. So what have we done? All the things on there. A lot of those reported last time. All students in TEP with special education supports and services have a virtual learning plan. English language learner teachers have worked with ELL families to develop virtual learning plans. And of course, the gifted and talented programming is delivered virtually and in-person. So through some creative scheduling, making sure that we're providing for learning differences, differentiation, language barriers, those students who are in need of enrichment. So that was, again, glad to have that as a checkmark. We'll continue for the remainder of this year for those who choose it, and then we'll see. As you know, the emergency proclamation that allows us to do that ends, I believe, in June. And so at that point for next year, we won't have the option of offering an online component unless the emergency proclamation gets extended. Sorry, I kind of talk a lot, breathe the mask, takes a little time here. Number two, continue enhancement of educational delivery models to ensure that high-quality blended learning can be developed, delivered despite any potential future disruptions. Again, very similar to number one, talking about the blendedness of it, so our virtual program. And so teachers of online students continue to meet weekly, discuss teaching strategies and challenges, giving them the ability to modify or enhance teaching as needed. February 5th, Professional Learning Day was redirected to provide staff the opportunity to prepare for a turn fully in-person learning. School staff participated in professional learning and collaboration time on Friday mornings to prepare for the transition to virtual instruction on inclement weather days. So the other ones are carried over from last time, but those are the three areas that we've seen change since the last time we met. And so we are using what we've learned. We did go online for a week after Thanksgiving and gave it kind of a chance to sort of cool down. And you may remember, we were at a high at one point of 22% positivity rate today. They've changed some of the way that's configured, so it's a little hard to know what's an apples-to-apples comparison, but significantly lower than that is how I'll leave it. But we have had three snow days, which does put us our last day on June 4th. And so now we're planning more for virtual days should we have a weather disruption. We try not to move into that second week in June, variety of reasons. Some of our buildings aren't climate-controlled, it can become a heat issue. Two, learning, our society is kind of conditioned to that learning starts to diminish a little bit in the summer, and so that is one of the reasons, as well as for summer school planning and all the things we're trying to put into place for what will begin in June. We've decided that should we have another weather disruption, we would go to a virtual learning day. So we've got some experience with that. There's some talk that that may be continued in the future, but we'll wait and see what happens legislatively with that for future school year.
So right now, the law has not changed.
Has not.
It's an exemption being allowed for the rest of the school.
Correct. It's all part of the emergency proclamation, so when that goes away, our authority to do that goes away. But there was legislation proposed mid-week last week, Thursday, maybe? Not sure exactly, that would give us that moving into the future. So if that's the case, we'll have some great discussion about that. As we've shared, I think a lot of us, and I'm sort of a believer that some snow days are okay, but when it gets to the point where it impacts operationally, then we have to think about, so we can talk about that number down the road, but how we might utilize that. Number three, you will see is some progress, study at-risk factors and develop programming for students in grade seven through eight. So that was really a carryover. We did a nine-ten at-risk programming study two years ago, and then last year, we moved into the, we were going to do seven-ten, and then we split that up into nine-ten with the intention of doing seven-eight this year. And we've had a little bit of a change in what is at risk and who is at risk. You know, we talked about it in tier one, tier two, and tier three. And as our students return, having experienced the pandemic significantly differently, depending on a lot of factors, we're kind of looking at at-riskness, at least in the short term, differently. So we've kind of changed that focus to all of our students as they return. So pandemic has shifted focus from a standalone at-risk program for a small number of students to continue improvements in the multi-tiered system of supports and TSS, structure and process. So, you know, sort of in the typical setting, 85% of our students, or 80% of our students are in tier one, 15 in tier two, and 5% in tier three. We're trying to figure out how are we going to engage with, evaluate, help our students in the tier one so that we don't see a growing percentage in tier two and tier three as a result of the pandemic? So really trying to look at at-riskness, not just for the seventh and eighth, that's just the bullet that was on here. How are we going to make sure that how the, you know, that students, as we talk about returning them academically to where they could have been, should have been, would have been without the pandemic, also paying attention to the at-risk factors and the social emotional part of that? That's really what that bullet talks about.
So do you see a point at which the original intent of this?
Absolutely.
Will return.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that will, we talked about, is this just an exile? Like, we're not doing that this year? Because that really, as written, is where we work with, well, we're still doing it, but we're focusing it differently. So I do see when we come back in May, probably a bullet that looks similar to this with more of the original intent to say, you know, where's this high level of need that we really focused the interventions there? Efforts will be focused on teacher professional learning, tier one interventions, instructional coaching, along with tier two and tier three interventions and supports. So again, how do we know at the tier one level that our kids, as they come back to us, are in need of support, additional support, not in need of support? And what is the training? Because obviously, the eyes and ears for that are our teachers and the parent professionals, but really starting with the teachers first. Number four, some significant progress. Enhanced gifted and talented programming, utilizing recommendations from the gifted and talented program study. Again, slightly unique because it's the pandemic, but all elementary schools are participating in professional learning sessions about the new identification process and the equity components in that process. We've used this time to say, how do we identify gifted and talented? How do we define gifted and talentedness of it? And then how are we looking at through an equity lens as well? There was a time historically where in education it was pretty structured around test scores, standardized test scores and cut scores, and it was pretty rigorous. If you didn't meet a random, no, I shouldn't say random, but a very specific cut score, you weren't going to be able to participate in. So we're trying to figure out and do a lot of research into, okay, what is really, what students really would benefit from gifted and talented or enrichment instruction in a variety of areas, not based on just a standardized test, but on just their, the abilities that they possess? So that's really become the focus of that during this time as well, and with the focus on some of the equity pieces. All the other two are just carryover from last time. I'm happy to read them if you want me to.
I think we can read them.
Okay. Just here, no? Number five, leverage school, leverage school-level areas of excellence and equity initiatives to create best practice exchanges that foster information sharing, additional learning and mutual support. So this one, we've done a lot of work in the last school year, some of which we've talked about at programs. So the district engaged with the Midwest and Plains Equity Assistance Center, and a team from across the district is currently participating in a cohort with MAPS center experts regarding equity-based strategic planning. So it was a three-full-day training. I participated in, some other administrators, as well as teachers, an SRO, some folks from around the district. And it really is a planning process data-driven. And so the intent of this is to bring through our priority initiative process some very specific priority initiatives for next year through that planning process. So it's not to circumvent what the board does, it's to enhance what the board does by bringing forth some, again, some very targeted priority initiatives. And we all know the history of our priority initiatives. If we get it on the priority initiatives, it tends to be something that comes to fruition, barring, you know, pandemic. So very excited about that. That's a connection that has been, you know, it would have been three days in Indianapolis instead it was three days on a Zoom. Didn't mind not having to drive to Indianapolis, didn't love three days on a Zoom, but I do think it's going to bear fruit and be very worthwhile. The education support team continues to participate in additional professional development sessions regarding equity in teaching and curriculum, and in turn provides professional learning to school-based curriculum staff. So that really comes from the new teacher center training, and then how we're training, and particularly our younger, or our newer teachers, excuse me, our newer teachers, on making sure that how we differentiate, how we, the teaching styles work for the needs of all of our students. Something that we're in the middle of, we finished three of the four days. Maybe you've heard about this in the community, because a lot of organizations are now starting to do this training, but the district executive team and members of the education support team are completing the Communities of Change training presented by the Fountain of Youth. So we've been, like, it's Friday morning, it's a four-session series. We've done three of the four, and our last Friday is, I don't think it's this Friday, actually, I was looking at my calendar, I think it's a week from Friday since we were in conferences this week. But it's been a very interesting process. You know Caprice and his folks, it's pretty real, and how they stick the plan, but the city has gone through that, the county leadership teams have gone through that. I've seen a lot of things put out there, GDTC, other groups, trying to kind of get that conversation so that there's sort of a community standard, you know, sort of a starting point, if you will, so the community can make those changes. And then the latest thing is search is currently underway for the district's next equity director. So we have posted that position, looked at resumes. We have some good candidates, but we have also reached out to a firm in Cedar Rapids that specializes in doing recruitment for these types of positions. And so we'll be bringing forward recommendation that we utilize that firm to make sure that we have a great pool of candidates. And so again, not to be dismissive of any local candidates who have applied, they're certainly very much in the running, but wanting to throw that net a little wider. And so spending a few dollars to get the expertise of a company in Cedar Rapids area who does this all the time for entities like a school district to make sure we've got right candidate. So that's going to slow things down by a few weeks or a month, but again, it's that go slow to go fast, and we want to make sure we've got the right leadership in that role. So we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get into that contract and that sort of thing in subcommittees next week. So any questions there? Number six, increase the number of students taking ACT with a focus on underrepresented groups and gather baseline data on students taking the AccuPlacer exam. A paved-way testing day is March 3rd, so next week. All juniors have been invited to the River Center, and they can take the ACT for free, the AccuPlacer, which is the Community College Placement Exam for free, or the ASVAB, which is a, an aptitude interest kind of a test. And so if somebody who really is not sure what they want to do might choose that versus somebody saying, I'd like to test the waters with the ACT, and particularly because it's free as opposed to only being a cost. And so we'll have data to share with this group after that testing day, how many took which test. We won't know outcomes for a little while, we'll get the ACT results at some point. We get an official breakdown from, by class, and so we'll know how this class did. As we've talked about, our goal is to increase the number of our students taking the ACT because the research really bears out that students taking the ACT or SAT or some type of a test, and then if they can follow it up with filling out the paths, but they see sort of what the possibilities might be and what are the resources available. So we're really trying to hone in on that to encourage all of our students to think about their future. So it's not about pushing all kids to college, it's about talking about, you know, four-year institutions, two-year institutions, other aptitudes where maybe then we can lead them to finding internships or apprenticeship programs or on-the-job training types of things. So again, helping them to find success for themselves and also not being afraid of what might happen if we go from, Mark's not in the room, but I think we have about 450 students on average take the ACT, maybe it's 400, I think it's 400, about 50%. If we go from 400 to 500, to 550 to 575, the more students we take, you know, will that change the overall? We're proud of how our ACT scores compare, and we know that that's going to be in a box in the front of the TH once a year, how our scores are, and we want to move past that need to, again, serving the needs of our kids and inspiring kids to think about what might be possible for them. So I appreciate the board's support on that because it is a little bit something that some folks are saying, oh, we should protect those scores. No, we should protect the kids.
Dan, will the students be providing their own transportation for this?
Most will, but we'll make transportation available if students need it. They're juniors, so we'll certainly offer a busing option. We'll see how many choose that.
Actually, I believe we have a bus at each school that is currently full for that day to transport students who need transportation to the Grand River Center.
But even that's a small percent.
Sure, sure.
Donahue?
Is that 100% of the juniors or just those?
So we are offering it to, to all of the juniors who want to participate. If they choose not to participate, then they'll have a Norman Day in class. We had talked about early in this process, trying to figure out what was on track for graduation and trying to hone in to the students who are technically on track. With everything going on this year, that gets a little fuzzy, and so we're just offering it to any junior who wants to take that, to take us up on this. And so again, we'll, we'll come back with those numbers after next week and be able to tell you how many took which. We'll be able to tell you results for a while because the ACT holds them, and they give it to you by year's brand. So all these juniors will be lumped in with any other juniors who took it some other time so they tell you how you did as a class. So some of the actual data will be delayed for a while, but we'll be able to say how many people took it.
I'm sorry. Did we talk at some point of having all juniors take a test that moves from school to future?
Yes. So that would be our goal, is to get all of our juniors to take one of those three tests. I think in the actual, I should bring my strategic plan with me, but it's to give them a, do you have the strategic plan, Mike?
Not right.
I think our goal is to get to 95%.
To have a collagen for your experience?
To have an exam. Somebody will pull that up. There's a, there's a goal that we're aiming to get to in the three years in the strategic plan. I just don't, I shouldn't.
Good. I just think that's a giant step forward for, for us really catapulting some of our students into an advanced kind of thinking that they're not at that point until then.
Absolutely.
And I applaud you for not worrying about the drop in ACT tests.
Yep.
It's going to happen, fine.
Yep. And it really is.
Thank you, Kobe.
You know, we, we just, the research, we just know. Thanks, Kobe.
You're welcome.
All right. This doesn't have the percentage on the mic.
I think it is in the, on the last page with the outcomes, the second.
It's not, it's just X out.
That's okay. We don't. It's 95%.
It's 95%. That's what I thought, I remember. So 90 gets a 95% by the time the, by the time the strategic plan is up in three years. And so we have a little bit of, this will be a baseline, and we have a couple of years to grow that. So it is to, it is to give them, exactly what you're saying, Nancy, an opportunity without a cost to think about, you know, we've talked a lot over the years about, you know, kind of how awesome graduation is, but then there's a little bit of a worry. You see some kids walk across the stage with not an earthly clue what they're going to do the next morning after graduation. So if we can get that number to shrink, and this is just one strategy to do that. Obviously, our guidance counselors and working through the dashboard of, you know, those experiences to internships and all kinds of things go into that, but this is one really concrete step where we can say, here's an opportunity for you to, to explore something without the risk of, you know, the cost or that sort of thing.
This will scoop up some kids we don't have other ways to scoop up, I think.
I believe that's right.
Yeah, I think we're looking forward mostly to seeing the percentages that did participate and growing from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, this very much will be a baseline. There are, quite honestly, some kids who are not participating because of, in many cases, parental, but maybe kids just, it's a large group. And we've got the whole River Center will be in multiple big rooms, but it's still, you know, it's still pandemic, so there might be a little bit of a lower number this year, but it's a baseline, and it will grow up for the next couple of years.
Do we have accommodations for those that are really kind of apprehensive to go into that?
Yeah, we have as many accommodations as are allowed by each test. Each test has some of its own requirements. So Julie Lang has spent a lot of time with ACT accommodations, AccuPlacer accommodations. Kobe and his team making sure we have the connectivity to do this at the, at the River Center. So it's a first, it's a first attempt, so there'll be a few things that we'll do differently, but you know, how do we, you know, even talk down the road, how do we do this in the morning and turn it into some kind of a job fair, college fair in the afternoon so they can go into the testing to other, you know, conversations or experiences?
So do we provide lunch down there?
Yeah, breakfast and lunch will be available for the students.
Wonderful.
It's Thanis, Mike, I got a quick question.
We can hear you, Mike.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
I guess my question, the fact that we were running to find this strategic plan to find data makes me, and I apologize if I forgot what our plan is there, but when you look at our strategic plan, I know that there is data that comes available at different times, but I think still in the strategic plan document that we have posted on the website, we've got some fairly aged data, and in some cases, we're probably halfway through that period. Is there a thought that either through this process or, you know, again, you told me when the right time to be, to refresh that and just to at least give our readers of that that might dive into that, be able to see, a lot, you know, a number of these, we, you know, we either said we had some data that was, well, some of it was dated as late as, you know, 2015 when you look at graduation rates, but then some of the other stuff, we just didn't have that. And I, I have to believe we've probably got some of that data now. Is there any thought to how we update that or see that in terms of the outcomes that we left in the strategic plan?
Yeah, so when we, that's a great question, Mike. So when we talk about our priority initiative updates in the spring, there are, you'd like to think we have better data, but you have to remember that the standardized test that the state gives was put on, on hold for several years, then we took it, and then last year we didn't because of the pandemic, and then this year, it seems like we're going to take it again. And so so many of our goals are based on that specific test, and there has been a little bit of a void there based on the pandemic. So we'll have to talk about, and it's a different test, and it's given at a different time, and so we'll have to come to some agreement on what those metrics really are going to be when, when this strategic, strategic plan continues to age. But, you know, we'll draw some, some comparisons and we'll try to put sort of an apples-to-apples things together. You know, some of the outside pieces, the ACT and those types of things have not changed much, but when you get into our other goals where it talks about increased proficiency on Iowa testing program, some of those data points are going to be, have holes in it just because of decisions made either to not give the test or because of the pandemic to not give the test. And so we will have to circle back around and try to figure out what is an apples-to-apples comparison. That won't be an easy feat. We do believe that the test will be given this year. There is a, some conversation at the federal level to exempt states from giving standardized testing this year because of the pandemic, but I think that's a state-by-state decision. And every indication we have from the state of Iowa is that we will be giving standardized tests in April. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, the reality is when you cover that large of a timeframe, I get that there are going to be things that change, there are going to be things that we, you know, we make, and it's okay, we make conscious decisions to kind of look at the outcomes and understand how either the data aggregation has changed or, you know, in the case of look at the outcomes and understand how either the, the data aggregation has changed or, you know, in, in the case of, um, you know, where we've chosen a different measurement, that, that makes sense to me, that's okay. I just wonder when it might be, I, I brought it out there and you, and to keep it somewhere on the calendar for our review to maybe dive into that. Um, maybe, I don't know whether that's the end of the school year or, you know, leading up to the start of next year. But it'd be nice just to recognize where we have changed those and to the extent that you, you know, again, we can tie them together. They may not tie nicely together, I give that, but it would be probably worthwhile to do that. That at least shows an effort to say, we still have some desired outcomes and we're still holding ourselves accountable to it, even though some of these things, um, some of these do have a tendency to change over time.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we can work through, uh, ed programs to some degree, but the entire board too, at, at our next, um, strategic planning session or whatever sort of works best for the board to say, you know, what, what has the history been for the past two or three years with testing, with changing in testing? What are, how do those compare and, and do we want to look at different data sets? Um, again, to try to create as much of an apples and apples comparison so we can look at growth as is possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm great.
Mike, you're basing it on what you see posted on the website from the strategic plan, right? With the dates on there and the outcomes, is that where you're kind of gleaming some of this from?
Correct, yeah, I mean, we, well, we, we actually lay out the outcomes, like, that's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah, because it says like in the fall of, like for an example, you know, we've got on there, the goal is twenty twenty-three, which is like coming up here before we know it, and it was set in two thousand seventeen, but we had two, you know, two school years in there with, you know, that altered a lot of this. So, yeah, I see what he's saying about needing to kind of relook at this to.
Yeah, absolutely, and some of those will be very doable. The FAST test, for example, will still be doable and, and something we've done, uh, that hasn't changed significantly. So that data will be good. Where it gets a little bumpy is where you see where it says Iowa testing program. And that's where you're really still going to start to compare some apples and oranges. And so then, how do we do that in a way that, that is, you know, that makes sense? That doesn't overestimate the work we've done, but also gives credit where, where that do also to our staff. So it's, but we'll, absolutely, we'll, we'll continue to look at that and we'll bring an update. I wouldn't say at our next round of meetings because that's next week, uh, but, uh, at our ed programs, uh, committee the following month.
We're still doing MAP testing. We did winter, I think I recall, and we'll do spring, right?
So MAP testing is, yes, is still, will, will still be valid, I believe. I don't believe there have been any change, significant changes in MAP. I know it changes all the time, but again, it's, it's going to be the, uh, the state's chosen test that has changed. They had one and they dropped it and then, you know, the history.
In many ways, that's going to be a better measure for us than the Iowa testing program because of its on again, off again recent history.
Yes, correct.
Where MAP has sustained.
Correct.
Across time.
The, the struggle will be the state will want to use the state test.
Oh, sure.
And they've chosen a, a formula that's going to try and meld those together to show growth. And of course, that's what the Iowa performance profile, profile will be based on. And so we'll have to account for that data or at least be able to explain it, uh, talk about it. It's, it, it's less than clean.
I'm just thinking for our internal metrics.
For, for, yeah, absolutely.
The MAP test is going to give us much more, I think, much more usable.
Yeah, the FAST and the MAP, I think will be a lot more, um, system, you know, system, systemic in the way it was given and the way it, it, it was, um, the way it's written, so.
Much more of a constant.
That's the word I was looking for, yes. All right, I was at.
Number seven.
Number seven, provide professional learning to enhance lesson planning, to move from focus on assessing the standards to focus on teaching and learning the standards. Uh, the top bullet, educational support team, instructional coaches, content leaders and building leadership teams are coaching collaborative learning communities as they analyze classroom assessment data to make instructional decisions that improve student learning of standards. I'll have to tell you that many of the things that were professional development based are a, a little bit muted this year because so much of our professional development time has had to focus on the pedagogy of teaching online. You know, just a variety of different, you know, coming back to school, giving, giving, uh, our professional development data to our staff to be prepared to have students come back. So we are a little behind on some of those PD because our time has evaporated into the more urgent need of preparing for our kids' needs, you know, the next day or the next week versus, you know, down, a year or so down the road. We could transition next to community, uh, engagement. Uh, number eight, develop and communicate return to learn practices and expectations with families and staff based on best practice recommendations from federal, state and local officials. Um, so here we are, we're back. Um, I think we have created a scenario that quite honestly is as safe as it possibly can be. Obviously, it can't be perfect, um, with, with our students completely back in the buildings from a social distancing standpoint. But I think we've built a great plan and we've communicated that to parents. And I think the outcome is that, uh, a significant percentage of parents have chosen to participate in that. Uh, one of those keys is vaccination efforts for staff are underway and all interested individuals have received the first dose. So the second dose scheduled, uh, in March, so come in quick next week. Um, some of our folks will get their second dose the following week or two, though, depending upon which vaccine they receive. But, uh, within the next three weeks, uh, all of our staff will be fully vaccinated with both the first and second, uh, vaccine. So we are very appreciative to, um, Mayor Rose Corrigan at the, at the city and the folks at the county incident management team. And they're, um, prioritizing those folks who work in education and it's not the case in all of their counties in the state. And we won't share names, but there are other UENs where a small fraction of their staff has been vaccinated. And for us to be at a point where all of ours have the first one and we'll have the second one in the next three weeks is, is astounding, quite honestly. So we're very appreciative of the folks who made that decision, the board of supervisors, everybody who weighed in and said, let's make sure as we come back to school educators. And it's not just us, it's the folks at Western View and Holy Families, all the educators in the county. So we're very appreciative of that.
I have to give a shout out to the people at the Yonkers distribution site. I was very fortunate to be able to get my first vaccination last week. That was as seamless an effort as I've ever experienced, really. It was just magnificently well orchestrated.
It was, yeah, and I actually had mine at, um, the east campus.
Oh.
For medical associates and equally as seamless.
Good.
The nurse was kind enough to forget to set my timer, so I got to sit there for an extra ten or fifteen minutes, which was kind of nice. One of those days where that was appreciated. Uh, so that really has helped with the, the confidence in, in our system and, and the fact that we'll be able to continue to provide for our students for the remainder of the school year. Uh, and number nine, there's really nothing, uh, new there, but our, our district is train district interpreters and translators to serve as cultural brokers who have helped strengthen relationships with various districts, stakeholder groups. That has been vital to us during this time to make sure that, um, we're able to communicate, um, how we're going to continue, um, our educational piece, how meals might be available, just, just across the, the, uh, board. It's not just the language skills, but it's the relationship skills that have really paid, paid off well. Number ten, there's systematized launch parent square, a new parent school engagement tool district wide. So, uh, most of you are familiar with parent square now. Parent square is operationalized and continues to provide the backbone of school family communications. Since June, the system has been used, has used to send two thousand six hundred and seventy-eight posts and two hundred and fifty-nine smart alerts. Uh, since June, six thousand eight hundred and ten parents have actively engaged with the system by commenting on or appreciating a post, completing a form, signing up for conferences, uh, or responding to a poll. So, and that's a significant number of our parents. Um, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's a, a significant percent.
It's about sixty-six percent of our parents and, and looking at the analytics tool in the system, it noted right in the tool that oftentimes there are multiple parents and guardians per student. And so, um, that would be typical, that one parent or guardian would normally be the primary responder to school communication. So that's a very high percentage of families who are engaged on some level with the district and the, I think, ninety-some percent, um, range.
If you looked at the Ryan Gans family, you wouldn't see anything from me, but my wife would be the one, Jen would be the one who responds, just, she's more on the ball. She had a better reason, but, and so that's exactly our situation where it would say, oh, only fifty percent. Well, it's the same person who responds and so that throws off three percentages a little bit. Uh, number eleven, we have put, we didn't X that, but we are going to probably pull that forward. Analyze data related to students open enrollment to another district and develop an action plan based on these analysis. It's really hard for us to tell where all of our kids, um, currently have gone. You know, if you looked at the, some of the information that's been recently reported, uh, we're down a hundred and seventy-two students and they didn't all go, stay local. Um, you know, if you look at local districts, some are up, but certainly nowhere near those numbers. So we know they didn't go to those districts and some we know moved out of town and we've been able to send records and so we know where they went. But there is a sizable number that we don't know where they are. And we have started to see a small but steady trickle back from homeschooling students to the school district. So it won't help us for our budget for next year, but it will for the following year, so. Um, effective resource management. Procure and deploy tablet, desktop devices at the elementary school level to both enhance access to technology, prepare, uh, for acquired continuous learning should it be necessary. Again, we had a week that, that was of that and we now look at that as potentially weather related. How long do you students have received devices and those devices are being actively used, uh, for learning? Hotspots, we have, um, seven hundred hotspots available, six hundred and thirty of them are currently used. So that's six hundred and thirty students and in many cases, six hundred and thirty families that wouldn't have internet access at the school district didn't provide that. So that falls into the equity world to some degree that we need to have a plan to provide for all of our students should we go to an online, um, scenario, short term or long term. And glad to see at the state level, some movement around making sure that, um, uh, internet access is a, is a utility. Uh, and so that all folks in the state will at some point have access to high speed internet because it is, it does hamper life, certainly education for those, uh, students who don't have it. Um, procure, number thirteen, procure additional technology support and work with partnerships to determine and eliminate barriers. So again, that, I guess I jumped ahead a little bit, some of those talking points are in there, that's a check, we've, we've accomplished that. Um, now it's just a matter of what does the system look like moving forward? And then what parts, we can't be responsible for the internet forever, it's too expensive for us. But again, it sounds like there's a focus on that at the state level, so that will kind of come off of our plate and, and on to somebody else's. Uh, fourteen, utilize secure and advanced vision for education, save funds to begin phase two of the Vuke Senior High School renovation project. I probably should say phase, uh, phase two and final phase, um, because we were able to put all of phase three into phase two. Uh, bids for the recommendation have been received and opened and the recommendation is expected at the March board meeting. So, uh, we'll have some conversations around that in the next week, but we were, um, pleased with the bids. Um, there's always that, you have a great plan and the bids just, uh, don't match with what your budget is. And so we are very pleased with where the bids came in. Um, and so we will be able to move forward with all aspects, um, depending on board approval with that. And really, really happy that we were able to take what phase three, which was going to be the auditorium and pull that forward into phase two and through conversations with community members and students and folks and they're really come up with what's going to be a fantastic, uh, auditorium for senior high school, as long as the rest, as well as the rest of the project too. And again, it remains on track for completion for the fall of twenty twenty-four. And I just, you know, those of you who are newer, maybe it's not like, okay, it all opens up at once, we don't have a grand opening, but this part opens and this part opens. So there'll be enhancements for students as early as next fall and then every, you know, ongoing from, from there on, so. Fifteen, plans strategic cost-saving measures due to budget pressures brought on by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, since the last strategic plan update, the district received notice of approximately six point five million in S R two funds to support the COVID nineteen relief. And again, we shared with the board sort of the tentative, uh, early pieces with that. I will tell you that, um, a lot of work is going on currently with our directors of elementary, secondary education, special education, about how do we focus those dollars as well as the social emotional pieces with, with additional learning opportunities in the summer. They're coming up with some really great creative ideas and we'll share with the, with the board and look for your approval. But, um, it's going to be really a strong, solid push to, to get our kids back to, again, where they could have been, would have been without the pandemic. And quite honestly, some of the FAST tests and some of those scores are going to be surprising. Some areas where kids are doing really, really well. And the work to reduce building district level expenditure, streets impossible, um, will be ongoing. And again, obviously, we have additional expenses like, uh, substitute, uh, teachers, when teachers are out sick, that's been a significant one. Uh, the sanitation, uh, pieces, the continual purchasing of, of PPE for, for students and staff, we need that. Um, it all, just all the, the cleaning components. So there's been a significant expense to keeping, um, as COVID free as possible within our buildings. Number eighteen, explore strategies to enhance operational efficiencies across district facilities. Um, again, we're very excited about this, the board held a work session in January to discuss this topic and begin conversations around future district efficiencies. Uh, discussions will continue through additional board work sessions in upcoming months. And Joni, the next one is March twenty-second, uh, at four thirty?
Four.
Four.
It is four thirty.
It's four o'clock.
Right, four.
Oh, maybe, yeah, four thirty, that's right, yes, yes, four thirty.
I think we're four thirty, we'll, we'll send, Joni will send you lots of reminders before then, but, um, so again, lots of talk about, okay, now that we've got the senior high piece done, what are we looking at, um, for a lot of different areas, but for facilities? But how do we create efficiencies so our ongoing, um, budget, uh, is maximized on programming for students?
I'm wrong, Joni, it's four thirty. You're right.
Number seventeen, um, provide professional development focused on approaches to teaching, uh, infused with technology influenced by both pandemic and the socio-political, cultural and psychological development of learners. So again, not a lot new there, but just lots of ongoing as we work with our staff to ensure that they have the skills that they need, uh, to help our students during this time. And again, we've transitioned back to, uh, in person and, uh, some majority of our students are now in that mode. Eighteen, enhance efforts to diversify staff, um, that mirror the Vuke community through view of future job descriptions, interview questions and recruitment efforts. District has participated in the urban education job alike, work sessions focused on strategies to hire our staff. This is a, uh, priority, I would say, um, for all of the UEN districts. And how do we create grow your own system, how do we support paraprofessionals who may wish to become teachers? How do we talk to our kids on, you know, the, the day we talked about earlier, making sure, hey, one of, one of the seats at the table is, you could be a teacher, you know? Um, and, and so how do we help sort of foster that and, and sort of create the grow your own? Um, and the district is exploring the use of an equity, I mentioned this earlier, um, focused search firm to support the hiring of district's next equity director. So it's making sure we have the right folks, um, making those decisions. And. Number nineteen, research best practices and develop plan to maximize the impact of the paraprofessional employee group on student learning. That was systematized last time and so there is no changes on, on, on number nineteen.
Wow. You guys have done a lot in this past year and.
It's been a year.
It has been a year and it's, it's good to see that, uh, that we got tunnel vision with the pandemic, which was very easy to do. Um, it, it's good to see that we haven't lost focus on the other stuff that we're going to have to jump back into now that we're back piled on to with all the other stuff that's going on with, you know.
Absolutely.
I appreciate all that, you guys have worked very hard and, um, I think it's amazing that we are where we are.
I, I quite honestly, I do too, you know, a year, well, they say days go slow and years go fast or something. And this past year has been a, the prime example that it's hard to believe that almost a year ago, not quite, we were a couple of weeks short of it. Uh, we sat in here on the fourteenth of March, I believe, is a Monday and tried to figure out what the world was going to throw at us. And, and the board. And and the board's work as well as the exec and every teacher and paraprofessional bus driver has been on on board and hasn't been flawless, but it's been, it's been pretty solid. Now we look forward to continuing to pick up those pieces and again, focusing on the programs that our kids need to get back to to where they, again, maximizing their educational opportunity. I think I feel like we did that during the pandemic, it just changed what that could be. Now we need to get back to how do we springboard back to giving them the opportunity to truly maximize their their educational opportunities.
I'd just like to say kudos to you and your staff at the forum and all the buildings, the principals, the teachers, the parents for being so cooperative in this in this time. You guys have done a tremendous job. Our numbers have always been down as far as viruses and it's just a great job. Once again, it reaffirms though to the general public, I think, the importance of schools in the community. How valuable the schools are to the community to fill a void, so to speak. I think nobody understands or appreciates teachers more so than they do at this point in time.
I thank you, Jim, I appreciate that and I couldn't agree more. I mean, it was, it was an exercise in rigid flexibility. I mean, how do we do what we had to do, but how do we be flexible? And a lot of great thinkers and sitting in this, you know, in this district at various rooms and come up with plans, so.
Well, I think we're going to find that our set priorities are going to be different going forward too. Because we're going to see what challenges and what makeups we're going to have to do from what this pandemic has brought forward. And it's going to show what works and what doesn't work as far as the learning curve, as far as what we can continue to do as was positive of it and how we make up for it. And I think that's, you know, while we're back in school, there's still a lot of big hurdles that I know we're going to have to overcome. And the challenges that we're going to see of what really affected students is a big concern for me. To see that it is, we're, teachers are going to see firsthand what's happening with their students and what they've missed. And I think that's going to be an eye opener, quite frankly.
Yeah, absolutely. And and they're, certainly they're up for the challenge. And I hear most common question is, my child is behind or the parent believes the child is behind, in some cases, that's not accurate, but that's what, so how are we going to get and get caught back up? And the reality is we'll plan programming. And again, that's social emotional as well as educational. But I'll tell you that a lot of that's going to be because that's what our teachers do. I mean, they know where the kids need to be, where they are, what they've missed. They'll differentiate, they'll, small group, large group, they'll do a million little things that never really get seen. And certainly never make it onto a priority initiative list, but that get those kids caught up. And we'll use the the dollars available through the S R two to make sure the time and the and it's all of those things. And it's going to take us some time in in the data and it's early and we'll share the data. But not surprisingly, our first graders are the group that are the most behind because they missed three months of kindergarten. And then they came back to hybrid. I guess the good news or the positive news is they're they're also the group we have the most time with. And so we will, over the course of not days or weeks or months, but over the course of the next couple of years, get those kids whole, we'll get them back to where where they where they will be or could be.
Well, thank you.
When I look at Dubuque in this time, I think it would be an interesting case study to really look, you know, do the 30,000 foot view of how this community and its public school system work together. Allowed the, provided the grace and the flexibility that's necessary for the, the, all the stops and starts and fits and starts. But when you look at it, it has I I have no doubt that at the microcosmic level, there's a lot of challenging stuff that's been experienced. But I think that the community has worked with the school system and the school system with the community and parents and students and staff. I mean, as a system, I think we can be very proud of the way that all happened. That takes massive contribution by all those parts and pieces to make that work so well. Yes, we have catch up. I'm looking forward to hearing more about what your staff has planned and is going to be possible with the funding. But overall, Dubuque would be a very interesting case study for how, as a community, this has gone forward.
Absolutely.
Certainly to your credit for the way the district has performed through it.
We we don't want to, thank you, Nancy, I appreciate that. We don't want to overlook that we can learn some things too. Not everything, you know, it's it's one of those events historically that shakes up the world a little bit. And then, you know, hopefully, you don't just reset to where you were, you reset to better. You know, you you've learned some things along the way there. And I think that's absolutely will be the case for public education as a whole, but in Dubuque certainly. What is it that we learned about teaching and learning and and then all of the other components that make for healthy kids and and what parts do we keep? And then what parts from the old system do we ever go back to?
All right, any other items that you have to cover?
Uh, nothing for me.
Well, good. Any board members? All right, there.
Dan, this is Dan.
Yep.
Sorry, quick question. Do you anticipate the state giving new requirements on who gets to attend summer academy with the the focus on you talking about students need to catch up? Summer academy is usually something that is designed to help people to catch up. So do you anticipate there being a new qualification or standard of who gets to attend that this summer?
Absolutely. And without jumping to the end of the book, we'll talk about this in the in the coming weeks. But we may pull out the qualifications altogether and invite everyone in certain grade levels.
Good idea.
So but more more to come on that. But yeah, that's exactly, it's a lot more, a lot more students in need of that.
Our families will be happy to hear that, if that's
I think so.
Yeah.
We tried really hard to put together a spring break school, but we just didn't have the time to pull it off.
Teachers are going to need a little break though, too.
Yeah, they'll need a break.
I know families might not, but the teachers are going to need a good mental break on this one, so, all right.
We are appreciative to have the dollars to be able to do that with. So that is, I mean, it really, so yes, next week we'll start to talk about that.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.